Okay, we'll officially get back to work here. This is round two. Now we'll move into minutes reports filed here at City Hall, which include the Cemetery Resources Board, Planning and Zoning Commission, the Campo Board of Directors, Committee on Administration, and Historic Preservation Commission. If you'd like to serve on one of our boards or commissions, you can do so by going to our website, jeffcimmo.org, or seeing Gail Strope, our HR Director. Next we'll move into Council Committee Reports. First is the Admin Committee chaired by Carrie Carroll.
Thank you. Administration Committee met last week. We talked about the vacant home fee, which is not a new fee, but after some presentation at, I believe, the previous council meeting, we explored that and got more information about that. We discussed the downtown sidewalk cafe permits, and I believe that's the third time that's appeared at administration, so we're definitely taking input and sending that back out to the cafes to get their feedback for a few changes on that. We also discussed the JCTV contract. We had a representative from Lincoln University and JCTV there to discuss that. And we also did appointments review, which appear on this council agenda. One item, residency requirements for city employees was on the agenda, but we did not have time to cover that, so it'll be on next month's agenda. The tentative date for the next meeting is Wednesday, April 24th at 8:00 a.m. Thank you.
All right, Carrie, moving on. Finance Committee is chaired by Second Ward Councilman, Mr. Sean Schulte.
Thank you, Mayor. The city received the March 1% sales tax in the amount of $1,811, which is $15,552 more than projected for the month of March. The Finance Department used actual receipts for November through February, and then adjusted March through October with the new revised sales tax numbers, so that $15,552 is what we show as being ahead of budget. The half percent capital improvement sales tax was received at $475,110. Year-to-date, we're $6,807 above projections. The lodging tax report, May 11th, or May of 2011 through January of 2013, the Convention Center Fund has received $1,10807, which is $47,705.12 average receipts on a monthly basis. And the Finance Department started giving the council a fund balance report, and it's estimated through March 20th that we have $3,523,169 in our fund balance, which is unrestricted. I say estimated, we are still waiting for the final audit numbers to come through and to see if there's any adjustments that need to be made from the audit. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Sean. Moving on to Public Safety, chaired by Dr. Brian Pope.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public Safety has no report tonight due to the fact that the meeting was canceled since there were no agenda items that needed to be discussed.
All right, thank you, Brian, and thanks for your service on that committee. Public Works and Planning, Mr. Bob Scrivner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public Works and Planning met Thursday, March 21st. We discussed a request by St. Mary's at the new hospital for permissive use of right-of-way for signs and lighting, which will be on the agenda. We passed that on to the council. We had a driveway issue on East McCarty Street where we've redone East McCarty with a business out there where the slope that was left on the driveway was probably exceeded what the committee felt was reasonable, so we discussed that and authorized staff to go ahead and make some adjustments there. We discussed agreement with Cole County Special Services for the Handy Wheel Service, and then a stormwater management plan was presented by Matt Marash. And our next meeting will be April the -- just a second, my phone went to sleep. April the 18th at 7:30 across the hall.
Okay. And the clerk reminded me, too, that all these committees will be kind of reformed. Obviously, the senior members will more than likely take over leadership of those, but the new members will be coming in, as some of them are here tonight. Mr. Branch is here tonight. Jim, welcome. You'll be here in a couple of weeks. And Mr. Stalin and Mr. Hussey are both candidates from the Third Ward. They're here. Did I miss anyone else? Short, you haven't filed yet, right? For office? Okay, just checking. Okay, moving on to Liaison Reports, JCTV, Mr. Larry Henry.
Thank you, Mayor. Our last JCTV committee meeting was March 21st. Main topic of discussion was the budget issues between the city and Lincoln's own budget issues. At this time, they're continuing, JCTV Committee is continuing efforts for fundraising, bringing in more funding ideas. And right now, our next meeting is tentative at this time. We'll have a date within the next week.
All right, thank you, Larry. Moving on to the next thing on our agenda this evening, it's appointments by the mayor to the Cultural Arts Commission, Parks and Rec Commission, and Planning and Zoning Commission, and that list is in front of you at this point in time. Would entertain a motion to approve. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
There appears to be a typo on the agenda. The planning and zonings are one-year alternates and not full terms. If Mrs. McMillan is correct, and I'm sure that she is.
What's that?
If Janice is correct, and I'm sure that she is.
Janice says it's one year. It is now struck as full, and it will now read one year. At this point in time, would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved and seconded by Weber and Schulte. Discussion. Seeing none, do voice vote. Correct, Drew? Voice vote? Well, actually, we do have a full term on here that's two-thirds. We'll do roll call, please.
Bray?
Aye.
Carroll?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Lubert?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Pope?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Weber?
Motion passes. Now we're on to number 10, Mr. Stiles. I appreciate you and your guests there waiting. This is the point where staff can make presentations, and we also have time for invited guests to come in. Thank you for your patience this evening, ladies, and feel welcome.
Thanks for having us. My name's Phil Stiles. I'm with the Parks and Recreation Department, and we're here to talk about a community walking program that we're going to be starting here at the end of April called Walk Jefferson City. With us is Dr. Sarah Gordon and Dr. Jennifer Kraus. They'll be talking about the program. Also representing the Cole County Health Department is Mary Teltors.
Well, thanks for having us this evening. We are really excited about the community walking program. I want to give you just a few words of background about how this all came about. About six to seven years ago, there were several pediatricians, several members of the Health Department that really saw an increasing problem with childhood obesity. This is my 31st year in practice, and I can tell you, my waiting room does not look the same in 2013 as it did in 1982. And we formed a community coalition. It's entirely staffed by volunteers, the Health Department, and I want to just publicly acknowledge Mary Teltors's contribution has been instrumental in this coalition's functioning over the last six years in our community. WECAN is an acronym for Ways to Enhance Children's Activity and Nutrition, and it actually was a program developed by the National Heart Lung and Blood Institute that is available to be adapted for communities across the United States, and it's worked very well for us. The coalition includes pediatricians from all three of the practices in Jefferson City. The Community Health Center pediatrician has also been involved. Both hospitals are involved, the Health Department, of course, private business support, Hy-Vee, I'm probably leaving out Parks and Recs and JC Public Schools. That has been such an important part of the coalition. This by far is the largest joint project that we've done with Parks and Rec. This year, January 2013 through December, we have, I believe, three primary initiatives that we're funding and working very hard on. The first is Walk JC, and I hope you all wear and enjoy your shirts, and I hope you all sign up. It's a nominal fee, $10, and Dr. Kraus will tell you what you get for $10. And the second initiative is a breastfeeding class that meets at the Health Department to help mothers making baby food to support breastfeeding in the second half of the first year of life. And then our third initiative is an educational session at the monthly Family Foster Care and Adoptive Families Meeting, which I did not realize was such a huge event. I mean, there are dozens of families that participate, and our role there is to work with the younger children, approximately kindergarten through fifth grade, on kitchen safety skills and healthy nutrition habits. And I've personally been working with them for about three months, and I've got to say, I love kids, but it's a lot different one-on-one in the exam room than it is with a table of six or eight kids teaching them kitchen skills. So that's just a little bit about WECAN, what we're about, and some of our more recent programs. And I'd like to turn it over now to Dr. Kraus to let her tell you the specifics of the walking program.
Thank you. Walk Jefferson City will run from late April until September. During that time, we'll have five specific walking events. We also hope that participants will walk on their own time, on the trails and in their neighborhoods, as individuals or with families and friends. Participants set their own fitness goals and record their progress in a fitness log. It's not really a competitive program, but we do plan to offer some prizes for participation. Our kickoff event will be Saturday, April 27th, meeting at 1:00 p.m. at the North Jefferson Pavilion. There, we plan to have some warm-up exercises. Our sponsors will have some booths for us. I believe the mayor will be in attendance, maybe some music, and the walk will go across the pedestrian bridge. Then monthly, we'll have a group walk, meeting at several of the local trails, and at those we'll have some educational programs on fitness and nutrition. An example would be water versus sports drinks, is one of our talks. The participants will record in logs how far they've walked, and to participate, you need to register through the Parks and Recreation Site. It's $10 for adults, $5 for kids. For that, you get a tee-shirt, a pedometer, and the walking log. It'll be really interesting to see how far our citizens walk from April to September. We're hoping to have a grand finale celebration in late September, possibly in conjunction with Oktoberfest. So we encourage you to participate, and we thank you for any help you can give in spreading the word about Walk Jefferson City.
I just want to say one thing. I hope you all get to take the chance to read this, because as city council people, you have, you can make a lot of decisions to make this environment healthier for pedestrians, and this is a good message.
All right, thank you for being here. Phil, did you have anything to add at all, sir?
No, I think I'm done.
All right, Phil, thank you for your help, and Bill Lockwood, I want to thank you. One thing that we do share as a city is our beautiful walkways and trailways that are all around our community. I want to thank all of our staff that go out of their way to help plan those and make those join up when they can as they're looking at different neighborhood projects. Next, we'll go into number 11, and Janice McMillan has an announcement as far as our spring cleanup dates. Janice?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Well, I'd like to announce winter is over. You can put those snow shovels away, and if you've broken any or need to get rid of some of that material that has accumulated over the winter, your time is coming. Our citywide residential large bulky item pickup has been scheduled. East of Jefferson Street, that begins on Monday, April 15th, and west of Jefferson begins on Monday, April 22nd.
Janice, sidebar conversation that Nathan and I were having, and I would ask you, or ask Chief, is it, if I set up this dishwasher, or whatever it might be, at the curb, is it legal for someone else to come take it?
Well, I hope it is.
Drew? It seems to be a regular occurrence, I'm just asking.
It is likely abandoned property.
Okay. Thank you, sir. All right, moving on, any questions of Janice on that? How many years have we been doing this? Do you know, Janice?
I'm not sure the exact start date, but it's been going on for at least 25 years.
I always get a lot of compliments from citizens about this, because it does allow them to get rid of the big bulky stuff that would normally kind of sit around and take up space.
Yes.
Okay, moving on, number 12. Number 12 allows people in the audience to make presentations on specific bills or resolutions, and I have on tonight's agenda Mr. Rod Chapel to talk about 2012-159. Rod, welcome. For the record, please state your name and address, and please limit your remarks to five minutes.
Hey, thank you. My name is Nimrod Chapel Jr. Everybody calls me Rod. I live at 701 Primrose Court here in Jefferson City. I want to thank you for keeping government open to the people. One of the great things about this meeting here tonight is not only can we just come right in and join you and see what's going on in our city, but for those folks who want to see at home through JCTV, they have an opportunity to do it that way. Thank you for your work and your service. Good luck to everybody that has an election coming up, those on the commission, those who would like to be. You have important jobs, and because you're here, frankly, a lot of folks don't have to be. I know I have a young son. He has soccer practice tonight, and I had to make the decision to be here with you instead of being with him, and I wonder how many times each of you has been, found yourself in a similar situation, but found yourself on the way to one of these meetings when you had another family obligation that you had concerns about being at. So thanks for doing that. It plays a valuable role in our lives. You all are smart, able, and capable. We have a wide and diversified pool of folks on our council and to serve as our leadership. We appreciate that. I know that each of you could use the time and your skills to find other valuable opportunities aside from the service that you're devoting to the city, not just tonight, but on all the many nights that you do. I'm speaking in opposition to, and forgive me, I don't have the proper term. Is it a motion? Is it a bill? Is it a resolution?
It would be a bill.
The bill. The bill to reduce compensation for council members and the mayor down to a dollar. I've seen similar things happen in state government where, not the current class, but the incoming class, might face some reduction in benefits or compensation, and many times, those folks who are present don't stand up for those that come behind them. It doesn't do or serve the people well to, and I'll just say it frankly, disregard your duties in that way. You gave me an opportunity to speak with you about a week ago, and I really appreciate that, and I'm glad that you are letting the public air comment here. I'll bring you some of the concerns that I've received, along with some information that I've been provided, in case you'd like to take a look at it. The single thing that I asked you to do last time was just do some research before we look at this bill, before we say whether this is what we want to do here in our city. I'm afraid that if we reduce compensation from what it is, and I'll just say the numbers in case anybody at home doesn't know, from $450 a month and $900 for the mayor, down to a dollar, that will reduce the talented pool of candidates who are willing to subject themselves, not only to the service requirements, but to the public scrutiny that comes along with this honored position. Let me suggest that there are a couple of studies that I've been able to find. Claudio Ferraz, F-E-R-R-A-Z, and Fernando Fain, F-I-N-A-N, excuse me if I didn't say those correctly, but they find a correlation between higher wages and political competition in terms of people who are interested in taking and doing a good job, and not only that, but that they have a higher quality of politician that comes about, not only through education, IQ, political experience, and different types of professionals. Let me suggest to you that one of the reasons that you're such a diversified body with doctors, other public servants, people who work on, for the community and in the community, is because that we, because we have, the system that's currently set up now. If we change it, we risk changing the pool of citizen who's allowed to participate in this local government. For another study, Dalbo, D-A-L, second word B-O, again with F-I-N-A-N, F-I-N-A-N, and Rossi, found that you have an increased or higher quality of participant with compensation. Now, I'm not going to make the argument that we ought to increase compensation for the city councilor, for the mayor, at this point. I feel like we have a nice and diverse body, and we have enough competition to warrant the magnitude of the position. But let me say this, please continue to study this issue. I'd be happy to forward any of the links that I can for the studies that have been done by those in academia correlating some pay with higher responsibility. I think that we expect a lot, and with that, there ought to at least be some meager compensation or reward for the services that you render. So with that, I thank you all.
Right, thank you for being here. Any questions for Mr. Chapel this evening? Right, thanks again, appreciate it. Say hi to the misses and Little Rod.
I'll do it.
Okay, moving on to the consent agenda, which is number 13. At this point in time, we will entertain a motion to approve A and B, please. It's moved and seconded by, who was my second? Sorry, for the record? Okay. Moved by Weber, seconded by Schulte. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion passes. Next, we'll move into 14, bids over $50,000. Roger would ask you for a short description of what we're looking at here in Bill 2661 for the viewers at home, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a replacement unit for our little TV van that we have in our wastewater department. We use it to run our little robot up the sewer lines so that we can look at them. We took bids. We did have one bid that was submitted that did not meet our specs, so we're not recommending that one, but we are recommending the low bid that did meet our specs, and the total cost here is $168,105. The current unit that we have is a 2001 model, so it has served us very well, but we are having problems with the camera today on that unit.
Okay, at this point in time, we will entertain a motion to approve. Okay, Lubert and Prather, first and second. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion passes. Now we'll move into bills introduced. We'll have first reading of Bill 2012-154.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Sam Gaines Construction Incorporated for the Stadium Boulevard Right Turn Lane at Edgewood and the Sidewalk at Target Drive Project.
Roger.
Thank you, Mayor. This is one of your council projects that was authorized in the budget this year. We did take bids on it. Sam Gaines Construction submitted the low bid of $129,413. That's out of 10 total bidders, so we had excellent bids again on this project. This is a project that you all approved now, funding out of our sales tax, and we would recommend approval of the low bid.
Okay, any questions of Roger on 154? Moving on, we'll have first reading of 2012-155.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a program agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for Transportation Enhancement Funds.
Roger, while we're here, we're also going to do first reading of 156.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a program agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for Transportation Enhancement Funds.
All right, Roger, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The city was very successful in receiving two grants from MoDOT for enhancements. The first one that was read is for additional parking to be added on Clay Street. This would allow us to have additional parking that, for folks that want to use the pedestrian Missouri River Bridge. MoDOT is funding 80% of this out of the federal enhancement funds. That total amount is $72,800. And the second one is a grant to make improvements to Water Street down where our Amtrak station is today, and that will replace all of the broken brick that's down there and all of that area of the street that is broken up, and some sidewalk repairs, as well as some improved parking in that area should beautify the, our Amtrak station for all those folks that come into Jefferson City to visit and whatever else they're here for.
Any questions on 155 or 156? Dr. Pope?
Roger, approximately, how long will it be until you take these projects to bid?
We're just now starting on the design on those, so it will probably be this next winter by the time we're ready for bidding these projects.
Okay, thank you.
Bob, go ahead.
Roger, on the Trailhead, I know this is something that had come through the Public Works and Planning Committee on a couple of occasions that we talked about it. I know when it was first proposed, we talked about it, and then later it came back again and we, when the, when it was part of the discussion about the communications building up there. But I don't recall any conversation about us getting a grant. Is that something new that we decided to apply for, or is something we had always applied? I mean, I'm thinking it's great, but I didn't realize we were going to be able to have that partially funded by MoDOT.
Yes, we did bring that to the council. There were actually three applications that we made for enhancement grants, and we were successful on two of the three, so we were very pleased with that.
Okay, I guess maybe you had brought it to us, and I just not remembering it, but good job.
Any other questions on 155 or 156? Moving on, we'll have first reading of 2012-157.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri declaring certain property to be surplus and authorizing the disposal of said property.
Roger.
This goes back to the previous bid over $50,000 on the van for our wastewater department, the old one. We are trading in as part of this process. They have offered us $35,000 for the trade-in of the old one. Our Finance Department did some research and came up with that this is, looks like a very good price for the trade-in on this, so we'll certainly be recommending approval at the next meeting.
Any questions for Roger on 157? All right, moving on, we'll have first reading of 158, please.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Cole County Special Services to provide Handy Wheels Transit Service to their clients.
Roger.
Currently, Cole County Special Services uses our Handy Wheels operation for their clients. They are providing us $30,000 each year for the service. They would like to use this $30,000 to put into the Hope Waiver Program, which will match their $30,000. Thereby, the city will get $60,000 from this $30,000 that they are putting into that program. It sounds like a really good deal, but their clients also qualify for Medicaid, which gives us some additional money, so it's not a complete gain of $60,000. It would be more of a gain if we had more clients, but at this point, it'll still be a little bit of a gain for us, so we think that the city should move forward with their proposal.
Okay, any questions for Roger on 158? Seeing none, we'll have first reading of 2012-159.
An ordinance amending the code of the city of Jefferson, Missouri pertaining to the salary of the mayor and city council.
Drew?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This bill would amend the salary of the mayor and the councilman to $1 per year. It would become effective as terms begin.
Okay, any questions or comments on that? Seeing none, we'll move into first reading of 2012-160.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri changing, amending, and modifying the zoning map of the zoning of the city of Jefferson by rezoning .90 acres from C1 Neighborhood Commercial to RS2 Single Family Residential for land addressed as 3117 Morrow View Drive, described as part of the northeast quarter of the southeast quarter of Section 22, Township 44 North, Range 11 West, Jefferson City, Cole County, Missouri.
Janice, do you want to do 161 also?
I will.
At the same time?
Yes.
Are they combined?
They're not combined. They're two separate parcels.
Okay, go ahead then, on 160, I'm sorry.
On Bill 160, I'll describe this, if Jeff can pull up the PowerPoint that shows the location of the property. This particular property is on Morrow View Drive. It's currently zoned C1 Neighborhood Commercial. It's owned by Scholastic. They have no use for this property as commercial any longer, and so they'd like to be able to market it as residential, hence the rezoning application. They do intend to, or if the future develops- residential, hence the rezoning application. They do intend to, or if the future developer would intend to extend all the utilities to the site, but that would come up to the council in a separate bill at a later date. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed the application for rezoning at their meeting on March fourteenth and recommended approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Janice on one sixty? Seeing none, we'll have first reading of twenty-twelve, one sixty-one.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, repealing the special exception use permit granted by ordinance number one-three-nine-zero-four, and approving a new special exception use permit for open land for property addressed as twenty-three-oh-one Green Meadow Drive, described as Reserve Tract A, Rivers Edge Estate subdivision, Jefferson City, Coal County, Missouri.
Janice.
Thank you, Mayor. This particular bill, or the property, is governed by a special exception use permit currently, and that was approved back in two thousand and five. That special exception use permit provided for certain conditions on the property, eventually leading to a savanna, which would be a natural area maintained on the property. That special exception use was never fully realized, and the property has grown up to the point where it needs some maintenance. The owner came to the Planning and Zoning Commission recently to request a change in that special exception use permit, and what they would like to do is discontinue the previously approved savanna and allow the tract to be farmed. This tract is a little over eighty acres, and about forty acres of it would be subject to farming, and they propose soybeans, corn, or hay in that central area. There's a border of woods. The Morrow River borders the site on the east side, and so they would maintain a thirty-foot natural buffer from the Morrow River. And there's also a tributary that runs through the property on the west end, on the west side of the property, and they would maintain a buffer along that little tributary as well. We did send notices to all of the adjoining neighbors, and there are quite a number of them, and they had the opportunity to come to the Planning and Zoning Commission when that was heard. And we had one, one neighbor who was across the Morrow River, actually, and who came to visit with the Planning and Zoning Commission. So there's only one objection registered at that time, and that particular party had a concern about the lighting on the wastewater pump station. And we believe we've addressed his concerns on the lighting, and so the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended this new special exception use permit. And the public hearing on this matter and the prior bill will be scheduled for Monday, April fifteenth. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Janice on twenty-twelve, one sixty-one? Thank you, Janice, for both of those presentations. Moving on, we'll have third reading of twenty-twelve, one forty-nine, under bills pending.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, deleting from the code the temporary restriction of pedestrian and bicycle traffic, which is now expired.
Mr. Hilbert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Several years ago, there was some bridge work that was being performed. That is now done, and has been done for a decade. This restriction remained in the code. We can just get rid of it. It's no longer effective, and so we thought we'd clean up the code and do that.
Okay, any questions on twenty-twelve, oh, I'm sorry, on twenty-twelve, one forty-nine? Discussion, debate, seeing none, roll call, please.
Bray.
Aye.
Carroll.
Aye.
Henry.
Aye.
Lubert.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Pope.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schulte.
Aye.
Scrivner.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we'll have third reading of twenty-twelve, one fifty.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with the Housing Authority of the city of Jefferson, Missouri regarding sewer service deposits.
Roger.
Thank you, Mayor. Right now, the city does charge deposits for their sewer patrons. The Housing Authority said this is something that is difficult for the folks that rent from them, so they're willing to enter into an agreement with the city that should any of their folks leave their property and not pay their sewer bill, they would be willing to pick up any of those costs, up to ninety days. Our folks are covering these, that we don't have any sewer bills that run past ninety days, so we don't see that there is any potential loss here for the city, so we would recommend approval of this agreement.
Okay, any questions of staff on twenty-twelve, one fifty? Discussion, seeing none, roll call, please.
Carroll.
Aye.
Henry.
Aye.
Lubert.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Pope.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schulte.
Aye.
Scrivner.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Bray.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we'll have third reading of twenty-twelve, one fifty-one.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement for joint funding of the household hazardous waste collection facility with the county of Coal.
Janice.
Thank you, Mayor. This bill would authorize the city to accept a contribution from Coal County for the operation of the household hazardous waste collection facility.
Any questions of Janice? Debate, roll call, please.
Henry.
Aye.
Lubert.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Pope.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schulte.
Aye.
Scrivner.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Bray.
Aye.
Carroll.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we'll have third reading of twenty-twelve, one fifty-two.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with BAR Engineering Company to evaluate and provide recommendations for sewer pretreatment codes.
Roger.
Thank you, Mayor. The state of Missouri requires that our city have a pretreatment program for our sewer facilities. Our staff does not have the expertise in putting this together, so we did go out for an RFP for this assistance, and BAR Engineering is the group that was selected to do this work, so we're recommending entering into a contract with them, and this is for engineering services that would develop a program that would be brought back to the city council once it's developed. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions of Roger? Mr. Lubert.
Do they have experience in this type work?
Out of the group that we had that submitted applications for this, they certainly had by far the most experience, and we were very pleased with what experience they were showing.
Any other questions or follow-up for Roger on one fifty-two? Mr. Henry.
Roger, what would be the cost to the city?
The total cost is sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars, and this does come out of our wastewater funds.
Okay, any other questions for Roger or debate on one fifty-two? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Lubert.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Pope.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schulte.
Aye.
Scrivner.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Bray.
Aye.
Carroll.
Aye.
Henry.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we'll have third reading of twenty-twelve, one fifty-three.
An ordinance amending the code of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, assigning the duty to administrate banners on utility poles to Public Works.
Roger.
When community development was split up, this was a portion of the program that was actually listed in Janice's department. Public Works has all of the bucket trucks and handles this program, so we're recommending the change here to put this under the Public Works Department.
Any questions of Roger's staff on twenty-twelve, one fifty-three? Bob.
Will there be any movement of personnel, or is it just a movement of, assignment of the responsibility?
It's just the assignment of duties. We've been doing it in Public Works. This is just something that was overlooked when community development was split up.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions pertaining to banners, one fifty-three? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Pope.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schulte.
Aye.
Scrivner.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Bray.
Aye.
Carroll.
Aye.
Henry.
Aye.
Lubert.
Aye. Motion is approved. Next, we'll go into resolutions. Nothing's on the informal calendar this evening. First of all, we'll entertain a motion and a second on Resolution twenty-twelve, one twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, and at this point in time, Roger, would you give us a breakdown of that, please?
Yes, every five years, the city needs to get a new stormwater management program permit approved from the state of Missouri, from the Department of Natural Resources. That is due in May of this year, and this permit application will be for years twenty-thirteen through twenty-eighteen. This resolution allows us to submit for this new permit. This was reviewed by our Public Works and Planning Meeting, Planning Committee at their last meeting.
Okay, any questions on twenty-twelve, twenty-five, resolution? Debate, seeing none, roll call, please.
Pope.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schulte.
Aye.
Scrivner.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Bray.
Aye.
Carroll.
Aye.
Henry.
Aye.
Lubert.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we'll look for a motion and second, please, on Resolution twenty-twelve, twenty-six.
So moved.
Moved and seconded by Pope and Schulte. At this point in time, we're calling Chief Schrader. Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution twenty-six authorizes the submission of a grant application to the Missouri Department of Transportation, more specifically, the Highway Safety Division. The funds would be used to pay overtime to the officers with the purpose of apprehending those who drive while intoxicated. The amount is thirty, or certainly the applied amount is thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars and sixty cents. There is no city match required, and if awarded, this would represent the sixth year of our participation.
Okay, any questions on twenty-twelve, twenty-six? Debate, seeing none, roll call, please.
Prather.
Aye.
Schulte.
Aye.
Scrivner.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Bray.
Aye.
Carroll.
Aye.
Henry.
Aye.
Lubert.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Pope.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we'll look for a motion and a second, please, on Resolution twenty-twelve, one twenty-seven.
So moved.
Moved by Pope and seconded by Schulte. Chief.
Thank you. This is very similar to the previous resolution. Twenty-seven is also a grant application to, or authorizes that application to the Missouri Department of Transportation, Highway Safety Division. The purpose of this grant is to fund overtime to our officers who would enforce hazardous violations, which might include, as examples, displaying red lights, stop signs, speeding, things of that nature. The applied for level of funding is thirty-five thousand, four hundred and seventy-two dollars. Again, no city match is required, and this would represent our tenth year of participation in the program.
Okay, any questions for Chief on twenty-twelve, twenty-seven? Any debate by council? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Schulte.
Aye.
Scrivner.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Bray.
Aye.
Carroll.
Aye.
Henry.
Aye.
Lubert.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Pope.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we'll ask for a motion and a second on Resolution twenty-twelve, twenty-eight.
Second.
Moved by Schulte, seconded by Pope. Bill Lockwood, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a resolution authorizing the Parks and Recreation Commission to file a grant application for Federal Land and Water Conservation Fund project monies to undertake an improvement on the West Edgewood Greenway. The project contemplated would be the rehabilitation and installation of the pedestrian bridge that was formerly located in the Mill Bottom area and put out at the West Edgewood Trailhead area. We are looking at the Jefferson City Host Lions Club as being a partner in this project as well.
Any questions for Mr. Lockwood on twenty-twelve, twenty-eight? Debate? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Scrivner.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Bray.
Aye.
Carroll.
Aye.
Henry.
Aye.
Lubert.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Pope.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schulte.
Aye.
Motion passes. At this point in time, Clerk, do we have anyone at all under number nineteen for presentations from the gallery? No? Okay. Council and staff discussion of presentation topics, so we did have some earlier, as far as the walking thing and whatnot. Any comments there from the council? Seeing none at this point in time, any new business to bring before the city this evening? Seeing none. At this point in time, we'll go into number twenty-two A, which is discussion of conference center RFP process. Mr. Rick Mahalovich was kind enough to do a lot of work on this on a sidebar assignment, and we appreciate his help. We had a work session the other day, and at that, we got a little bit late in time and decided to kind of bring it up here tonight. So, Rick, I will give the floor to you. Do you have a motion, sir?
I do. I'd move to proceed with an RFP, Rick, excuse me, I move to proceed with a request for proposals for a conference center facilitator and advisor.
Second.
Moved by Rick, seconded by Rick. Okay, Rick.
Okay, this is an extension of the discussion we had the other day. As you remember, we voted on a timeline to proceed with, on the tentative timeline to proceed with, the evaluation of conference proposals, and then we also adopted a proposal process. And that process called for a, I think it was, it's actually in your electronic, a evaluation period and a decision to be made by the council. So this proposal is to hire a professional services to help us through that evaluation phase of the proposal. They would, whoever the selected person or group would be, would provide us a review of all proposals, develop and clarify the questions as appropriate, facilitate a staff evaluation process, a public evaluation viewing invited stakeholders, and evaluation by experts in the field, facilitate that, and then provide a presentation of proposals and a summary of evaluation activities, and then recommend method for evaluation by us, the council, and then ultimately facilitate a discussion, and ultimately, we vote on our own conscience in how much value we put in the experts that have been provided. That's it in a nutshell. We have no obligation to accept any proposal. Should we not choose that this is a good method to go by, if you have thoughts that maybe, maybe we can do it on our own, which I would disagree with, but we still can reject any or all proposals after the two week or whenever the date is this is due.
And I'm sorry, Rick, if I missed this, but the funding for this would come from?
It would be separate funds that are dedicated for the hotel and lodging tax, so it is for the conference center. It's not out of any general revenue funds that we could use in any way.
So it'd be from the lodging tax?
Right.
Okay. Any other questions or comments at this point in time on the motion on the floor? Bob.
Have we determined how long the process of selecting the RFP process and so forth, how long it'd take to select some?
I would.
I guess I do have a concern about that further delay.
If it slows it down, so to speak. Rick, I know we talked on a sidebar conversation, but what are your thoughts on that, sir?
I don't believe, based on the timeline, the tentative timeline we adopted, we still have plenty of time, I think, to have the period for, and I might ask Drew or Terry to assist on the timeline, but I think we have to have a minimum of two weeks to be out on the street on this, and so if it fall away with, within our timeline to identify expertise and still not, and still proceed with the timeline that we adopted. Essentially, if you remember, we were going to have the proposals due on June thirtieth, and then make a decision by July one, so this proposal would be really to fill that area of evaluation, which is twenty-some days.
You said June thirtieth. Did you misspeak?
June third.
Oh, okay.
Yes, I did.
Maybe I misunderstood you. I thought you said thirtieth, okay. And the amount, is there an amount that we've decided on as far as what we would expect to pay?
A little bit of difference in opinion maybe between staff and what is here on page, top page, you know, from the cover, it's one, two, three, fourth, fourth page in, it says authorized expenditures. The city council has authorized no more than ten thousand dollars for this service. There's some debate whether we ought to put any dollar in there, because it will be ten thousand since we're proposing it.
Right.
And so I would yield to And so I would yield to any amendment that sees fit, but I left it in there for discussion.
Do you have any thoughts on that, Bob?
Though I probably agree that we'd be better off not to put anything in, and then if it's outside of what we feel comfortable with, we don't have to accept any proposal, so.
Do you want to make that as an amendment?
Ralph wants to.
Okay, Ralph.
Speak first.
I will make that amendment.
Okay.
I will propose that amendment to delete the dollar amount.
Sir, second?
Second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded that we leave the dollar amount out of the RFP discussion on the amendment. Any debate from council? Seeing none, roll call please. He'll be voting on leaving it out.
Bray.
Aye.
Carol.
Aye.
Henry.
Aye.
Lubert.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Pope.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schulte.
Aye.
Scrivner.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Motion passes, now we'll be discussing the main motion as just recently amended. Any other questions of Rick or debate among council members or questions of staff on the RFP process for conference center and getting some expert help? Rick?
I just want to also note that I got some feedback from some of you whether or not this person would be biased, or could we find anybody that would be biased? And so on the bottom of one of pages, a disqualification that would say if, in an effort to prevent, to conflict of interest, that would disqualify him if they had future pending business with anybody, any of the proposers. The other thing is that the selected facilitator would be brought forward to the three proposers, and if they, in writing, if they objected, we could make that a part of our consideration, whether we wanted to hire that person or not, or that group.
Rick, I have a question for you, and I ask this for the viewers at home or whoever may watch us on Ustream later. In your eyes, they would be looking at the business plan, basically, that each individual developer would bring towards us, and I'm assuming part of that would be the dollars and cents of that and the performa, is that correct?
That is correct. If you look at our criteria, that adds up to be 100. That about 60% of that has to do with finance and performa and economic benefit, and you total that all together, and we may or may not have the expertise amongst us to evaluate that in the depth that it needs to be evaluated, so we would hope that this proposal brings forth an evaluation in a group of people that can do that performa for us.
Okay, any other debate or questions, Bob?
Who's going to select, what will the selection process be for the, will this be selected by staff?
Drew.
Or is the council going to?
Yeah, unless the council decides to change process, it would go through our normal selection, which would, Nathan would appoint a selection committee, and we would recommend it in the ultimate, we probably, I don't know. My guess is we bring the contract back to you, even though we wouldn't necessarily have to, although I guess that would be up for a little discussion.
What was your intentions, Rick, as the author of this, so to speak?
I think it was recommended during our work session that we just bring it through the normal process.
Through staff.
My recommendation.
That'd be my preference.
Sure, right. Okay, any other questions or debate on the RFP process? Mr. Schulte.
Drew, this is a qualification-based RFP, so we will not be asking them for a contract value since it's professional services, or how's that work?
Well, that's an interesting question. That's one of the issues that came up. As we've all come to know, architects and engineers have a special process, and they can't, they don't go through the RFP process, the Request for Proposals, they go through the RFQ process, which is Request for Qualifications. And in the RFQ process, you basically say, tell us your skills and how good you are at this type of thing, and if you're the best, then we negotiate with you. I believe this is intended to be an RFP process. The risk here you've got is that you cannot then ask for architectural advice or engineering device from these folks, and they can't render it, because at that point, they're soliciting some, a skill for which they did not go through the RFQ process. These, and of course, this says whatever it says, what I believe it says, that what you're asking for here is some advice on finances, advice on what type of questions to ask, and guidance and process. So you're not going to get any architectural advice, and you're not going to get any engineering advice at that person or any of their subcontractors, because they can't provide that. So we will have to be very, you know, very aware of that particular issue. So the answer to your question is no, we'll be asking how much they want in this RFP process.
Okay, additional questions for staff or Rick or discussion?
Can I add one other thing?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
That's also, Terry and I have spent a lot of time on this particular issue. There's also a risk that if people with architects in their name bid, they may be out too, because there's a very strict law about the RFQ process, and if you put in your name anywhere that you're an architect, you're an architect, so they're going to be out, unless we go through a different process, which is an RFQ.
Okay. Rick. Bob?
I'm maybe asking a question here that I'm not sure that I, well, let me just ask it. The, when you, I believe I've seen and experienced that when you do an RFQ for an architect, for instance, that they typically, when they, the way they price their services is as a percentage of the project. And so I think the idea that we are looking for someone whose expertise might fall in a range of $10,000 or less, I haven't seen very many architects whose percentage of the project would fall in that kind of range. So just by virtue of eliminating the RFQ and doing the RFP instead, we might very well, maybe we wouldn't get the level of expertise that we need, I'm not sure, but we might be able to stay more in the ballpark of what we were, what we've talked about and what we've looked for.
Part of what you're looking for is essentially kind of a developer, somebody who knows what it takes to construct a big building and knows what kind of questions to ask. So while in their mind, they may, you know, be practicing engineering, you know, they don't need that as they express, you know, what questions you ought to ask and what steps you ought to take for the next big construction project. I think you can probably sometimes get architects on an hourly basis for some minor jobs. It's definitely more often, and they much prefer the percentage of the job concept, so I think it's not impossible, it's unlikely, but.
Are we placing ourselves at risk that we might have someone propose a substandard structure that we might not recognize? I mean, I, for one, am not concerned about that, but is that, is that a risk that we would put ourselves in if we don't have that architecture or engineering expertise to call on?
The guy with the ugly tie is just chomping at the bit to talk.
That is a tie, there's no doubt, Nathan.
Well, I'm sorry, I thought I was next, but you're apparently referring to someone else. Beautiful tie. You know, the thing is, is that like any building that's built, we have engineers, and our engineers will review the project, and while they're not architects, they certainly would be able to tell if the building was unsafe. Likewise, we have inspectors, and so when the building is built and being built, we will make sure that it's inspected. So I really don't have much concern about that. I'd also point out that we could, if we thought we needed that kind of expertise, still at any point, go out and get architectural advice.
Well, that's the reason I asked the question, is because I, for those who might be listening at home who might come to the conclusion that we're short cutting or something along that line, I wanted to make, I wanted to hear it stated, that we're really not at risk in that area.
Rick.
Given just a bit of time to think about it, I see no problem with how you described that, and I would just say that as we send out this RFP, we may make that clear that we're not seeking architectural or engineering services. And if you expect to render it, then you'd be disqualified. I don't know if that's normal language, but it.
Roger.
I think what you're requesting is for an advisor to the city here. When the actual design for a building gets done, the engineering and architecture firm that does that design, they will stamp those plans, and it'll be their responsibility to ensure that everything is met. You're just asking here for assistance to help you deliberate in your decisions on which is the best firm ultimately to pick for this conference center.
And I think really, Rick, the caveat of all this is really someone to show us the best business plan and what will truly work, and hopefully someone who has seen other developments like this across the country and help nurture those and get those along. I think that's the whole idea. Is that right, Rick? Okay. Any other discussion on what we'll call the RFP process motion at this point in time? Any other debate? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call, please.
Bray.
Aye.
Carol.
Aye.
Henry. Lubert.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Pope.
No.
Prather.
Aye.
Schulte.
Aye.
Scrivner.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we have any other scheduled reports that we did not cover earlier? Seeing none pursuant to, yes, sir?
I would just like to take a moment to remember a great citizen. Today is the one-year anniversary of us losing our great friend Dick Wilson.
Oh.
And it would be nice if we'd take a moment and remember Dick for all of his service.
I think with that, we could do a moment of silence for Dick right now, because I'm sure he's watching from above. A lot of people don't remember this, but when we went out for our half-cent sales tax here about a year and a half ago, we needed a chair, and Dick, as Chief knows, because he was Dick's neighbor and still neighbor to his family, even with his battle with cancer, he was willing to take on that role for our city, and he's definitely missed, and Dr. Pope, I definitely appreciate you bringing that up. Next pursuant to Subchapter 610.021, the revised statutes of Missouri. We will be going into closed session next door if the council would vote to do that. At this point in time, we'll entertain a motion to do so. Is there a motion to go into closed session next door to talk about real estate? Second, is there a second? It's been moved and seconded, discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Bray.
Aye.
Carol.
Aye.
Henry.
Aye.
Lubert.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Pope.
No.
Prather.
Aye.
Schulte.
Aye.
Scrivner.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Okay, before we do that, I know we have some other stuff that we want to cover right quick before we adjourn over there, Ms. Carol.
Before we adjourn, I wanted to, and I'm sure all of us want to thank Roger for his service here to the city. This is your last council meeting, and you will truly be missed, and I so appreciate all of your time and effort and ideas that you've given to us. It's been over a year now that you've been on staff. When you came on board, I was so excited that you were here, and I know what you've, you've made such a big difference to the city, even just in a little over a year. And speaking not just for the council, but for the public and the comments that I hear all the time from the minute you came on board through all of the, everything that's happened, the public has really, truly said, what a wonderful job you've done. You will be greatly missed. I'm glad to hear that you'll still be involved, hopefully on a commission to the city, that's great. Hope we haven't seen the last of you here at City Hall, but thank you so, so much for all of your service to the city.
Thank you.
Roger, I'd also like to echo that. There is a, there's a secret in Jefferson City that's about to get out. Roger and I are actually related, we're cousins. We're very far removed, but we share a great uncle Leo, and I'm sure he'd be very proud of what you've done for MoDOT and especially for here. And as Kerry said, the day that he handed in his resignation, he also turned in two things to serve on our boards and commissions. So I think that speaks very highly of Roger. Any other comments of Roger at this point in time? If not, I think we owe you a round of applause. Thanks, guy. And do you have anything to say, sir?
Thank you very much. I do appreciate the support I've received from the council and all the staff here. It's been a great place to work, and I've enjoyed it. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Roger. One more reminder, don't forget to vote tomorrow, and we have council races out there along with school board issues, and the council will reconvene next door for a real estate matter. Thank you very much.